Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's Rondiquay Planning Board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to the left of the room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly manner down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes. So please identify yourself each and every time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order of the agenda that there's extra copies near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative shall come to the podium, identify themselves, give their address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time, anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board and only the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input and the board will then move on to the decision. No further input is allowed at that point. With that, will you please call the first case?
Thank you, Chairman. Case number PB 2021-09-1. Tabled or adjourned, public hearing remains open upon the matter of request by vital signs, acting as agent for Ridge Portland Rochester LLC for signage approval to refurbish the existing pole sign on premises 1233 East Ridge Road in a C business district.
I just noticed this was a tabled item. Do I have to move the heaven on?
I will make a motion to remove this item from the table for consideration.
And do I have a second? Second?
Good evening. Steve Stanley. Is it the home address or business address? I'm sorry.
Business address is fine.
764 Bridge Road, Webster, New York, 14580.
One more. Everybody who, I or nay for the tabling. Everybody in favor, please say aye. No objections. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm here with Steve. My name is Matt Lester. I'm the applicant. Business address is 1657 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14610.
Thank you.
So we are here to apply with our original application to refurbish the existing pole sign at 1233 East Ridge Road.
This project was a re-subdivision of two lots into one, which created a shopping center scenario and thus the allowable square footage for the panel in a shopping center, 60 square feet. We're here to advance the application for, to refurbish the existing sign to 40 square feet and update the exterior sign, create panels for the tenants on both lots. So this will be the only sign we'll be applying for, for the entire shopping center in hopes to advance the application. We're getting under the gun here with the weather and want to make sure that we're ready for the tenants' openings. But we, we came up with a plan to replace the cabinet or improve the cabinet with some welding and I could let Steve speak to more of the construction if that's a question. Otherwise, the application in front of us is what we'd like to advance tonight.
Do you want to speak more to?
Sure. So what we will be doing is we will be sanding down the existing poles that are there using wire brush to try to get rid of the surface rust that are on the existing poles. We will be removing the existing cabinet, refabricating a new cabinet that is going to be 58 inches in width, 96 inches in height. As you can see in the top right-hand corner of the drawing, the poles that are there existing are turned diagonally. So what we'll be doing is we'll be making U-channel brackets to weld to the existing poles and then using half-inch stainless steel through bolt fashioners to mount the new cabinet to the existing poles. The sign will also be internally illuminated by LEDs. And that is, we will be using industrial strength paint to paint the poles and the cabinet as well.
And again, just to reiterate, the tenant, tenants that will be accommodated with this sign will consist of both, the entire shopping center, both buildings. The Rachel's building furthest to the east as well as the three tenants that will be located in the former Rite Aid.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
I do. I have a, I have a couple, if that's okay, Mr. Chair. The first one is for staff. And I think this has come up before, but I just want to verify. The square footage of this sign includes both sides, correct?
No, you count the panel itself, the dimensional panel. It's a two-way sign. You don't count both sides.
Right. So 40, when they, when you say 60, that means they can have 60?
The shape, the outline of the sign.
Yeah, and that's what I figured. I was just, just double, so we're not. So if they say they've got 40, they don't have 80 is what I'm getting at.
Correct.
Okay. And my second question is for the applicant. I understand, you know, we got a letter from you kind of explaining your position on the whole thing. I can be compassionate to that. You did come in at one point with this plan. Have we abandoned the brick base idea?
Yes, we have. At this point, we need to advance this application.
Sure. No, absolutely. You would not be open in any way, shape, or form to maybe us approving this sort of a thing and then you doing it in two stages. So basically, you build this, this fall, and then next spring, put in this brick thing. I prefer this is my point.
And again, not to get completely off track, but I think if we were to adjust the sign, we'd probably prefer to look at a completely different sign, which could incorporate some of those things. We, I just can't. We need to advance the application. I apologize for the time you spent.
Nope, that's why I asked.
It's not to say that, you know, there could be conversations after that and we could explore some creative. I can't come home empty-handed.
No, I fully understand your position and so I thank you for your, your time with us. That's all.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
So I have two. First question, there's no colors called out on this. What are the colors that the posts in the sign box would be?
The colors that you see there, they'll be painted black.
So even though it looks like there's two-tone, it's?
The two-tone is a design element for the, tried to show the dimension and the shadowing on the rendering.
All right.
Everything will be painted black, yes.
Okay. Okay. We don't have a site plan as part of this. And I echo everything that my counterpart said previously. So I don't know exactly what we may or may not already have as part of this application for landscaping around the base of this. I definitely am much more in favor of the brick option myself. I think it's a relatively reasonable way to look at it, the two-stage approach. That certainly would not restrict any sort of approval tonight, at least in my eyes. But there's got to be something done in my mind around the base of this thing, whether it's some, some sort of treatment to the actual sign itself, landscaping. There's got to be something around the base of this. That's my feeling.
So to that point, we do have a landscape plan.
Yeah, that was not, I don't have that with me. To my knowledge, that did not show anything updated per this application, though. That was just for the location of this sign.
I do know, I'm sorry.
Is that correct? I think that was just, just to show the sign that we were talking about in the very first, a couple of months ago when you guys were here.
I think, I think for the site plan approval, there was landscaping that was approved as part of that. And I believe on the site plan approval, the location of this sign was shown.
Who else doesn't have the landscape plan? Do you have it?
Not, not with you.
Tell him you have it.
Yeah, I've got this. It's not.
Yeah, so this, I mean, again, this, this is the problem with the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the problem with the sign and the site plan approval being separate, is that that landscaping was approved not knowing that this was the sign. And that's all at most height, 24 inches tall. So to me, that is not appropriate to now go with this proposed sign. So in my eyes, something needs to be done around the treatment of the base of this sign. I'm one person, so.
I'll echo that. I'm, do you know when the last time this board approved a pylon sign that was already existing?
We're not asking for, we're just renovating the existing sign.
Yeah, what I'm asking you is, across the street, we actually had them remove a sign, remove the pole. We've done that in several places along the avenue. And I know that we've had these conversations at workshop. The conversations that we've had have not been addressed. I'm not pleased with any of this. The most I would do is probably the brick on this. But at this moment, this application doesn't enjoy my support.
And as far as the brick we're referring to, is it, is it what?
I think what Mr. Evelyn showed, your previous, yeah. One of your previous. Yeah, this is stamped. Not stamped, but the revision date is 10/12/21.
So I'm comfortable to advance that if we could stay on pace tonight with that.
I think this will get you farther.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. The, the only question I ask is if we would be in a, in a position to replace the sign with that sign, but a new sign, rather than refurbishing that existing sign. Same dimensions, same, same like kind, just a new, a new sign. So.
Is that what you want to do?
At this point, the application is to refurbish this sign, but we, we would concede to have that option. Just from a standpoint that it'll allow us some efficiencies to construct the sign indoors and install it during the winter. In that, in those dimensions with, with, with that, with that rendering they have there today.
Mr. Chair, is it okay if we consult the town on that?
We could, but I'm going to need to see that because I don't have that.
It was from a previous application, but you might have been, it might have been the month you were out. So if I can provide a copy for you as well. What I just want to clarify is there's two points. One is just for the board's knowledge and also for anybody viewing at home or in the audience, when the Rite Aid building itself was split from one tenant occupant to three, that itself created a plaza environment. The fact that Rachel's is also on the parcel just furthers the plaza because that building by itself was more than 10,000 square feet. So by itself, that would have risen to the level of creating a plaza on the parcel. The second one is that whether it's, my understanding from the town attorney's analysis is that whether it's reuse of an existing sign that conforms to the no more than 20 feet and no greater than 60 square feet of signage paneling or space, whether it's new or whether it's refurbished, it's allowed by code. So.
I just want to address that. The only reason I'm bringing that up is we've actually made applicants take signs down. We have made them take signs down. So I'm not sure if I was violating their 14th amendment then or if I'm violating this guy's 70, or an article 78 on this. So I'm not, because we did, we made the guys at Santa Motor cut that sign down.
Sure. Yeah, and I know you've, you've seen sort of our, our firm's position on it. It's, it, just because it's, it's been consistently done doesn't mean that it wouldn't, it would, it would survive a challenge.
Right, but we now subject ourselves to a challenge from the other folks where I've actually forced them to do something different.
If they, if they've agreed to it and it's, and it's been approved in that way, then, you know, that's, you know, those, it doesn't necessarily mean on this one, that's, that's the, the proper way to go. I think the, you know, the point is they have a validly existing pole sign there.
Right, but we're using the underlying master plan, as it were, that was calling out these.
Okay, you, yeah, you've, I mean, you've, you've read multiple, you know, emails and that's our position and you, you understand it and.
I definitely understand it. I don't agree with it.
Obviously, it's your decision.
Right.
So, so what I heard from Kerry is if, if you're okay going forward, and this is just me talking, if you're okay going forward with that brick, the brick monument situation, same size sign, but you want to build a new one, it sounds like that doesn't change anything to do with the reuse of your application. So I'm totally comfortable with that. It sounds like, judging by, you know, our deputy town attorneys and his firm's stance on it, your attorney's firm stands on it, you are allowed by code to have a sign this size. If you want to build a new one that has that brick base, I would prefer that over the reuse of this one that's there.
Okay.
Okay?
So for clarity, you're now proposing this one?
Yeah, if, if.
Okay. My question is.
Those are the comments. I'll, I'll agree to those comments.
Well, I want to make sure you look at this because I'm trying to compare everything on here. And the only thing, you know, I see some, one thing, it calls out the masonry base, but then it says the total square foot footage of the signage per site is 40. Does that meet the requirement?
So the 40, again, we don't measure two sites. When we think of a sign, it's the shape of the sign and that's the outline of the, of the signage is what's measured and that's what the square footage comes from. So the 40 that is being proposed on the brick base is the same as the 40 that's being proposed on the existing pole sign. And the applicant can correct, can correct me if I'm inaccurately reporting that.
So, but a couple of other questions though. So, so you're, I'm saying it's not on, it's not listed on here. That, that square footage is not on here.
Understood. So the applicant would have up to 60 square feet of sign paneling space to utilize and it would not require any variance. And so if the overall look is okay with the board, the overall appearance of the, of the sign is okay and it meets the height and the square footage requirements or then, then it's, it's okay if the dimensions are not enumerated as long as they don't exceed the, what's required by town code. That's when it would become a problem because they'd be creating a need for a variance.
I got it. But, but the sign, this sign is 50, 54 across. This one is 58, obviously because of the things on the side, right? And then, you know, the base is 104 versus what's currently being shown is 58. So how do, how do we know what this computes to? That's what I'm trying to get at.
So I would, I would ask the applicant, the applicant would be the one to be able to provide a square footage analysis on?
So you know where I was going because I see you're already calculating.
Yes, we are.
I don't know if this is on, but we're doing, this is what a sign guy and an applicant does math.
Has the rest of the board looking at this one? I just want to make sure. Bradley?
Yeah.
Everybody over there did?
While they're doing some math, I have some question, I have a question. Does, whether or not they are reusing the sign or replacing the sign have any bearing on our, the design of the sign from our perspective as a planning board, town attorney?
I'm sorry, say again?
Does whether or not they are reusing an existing sign or replacing a sign in totality, does that have any, does that have any bearing on the flexibility that we have with the design as a board?
I mean, my, my understanding is it would be the, the same analysis.
As long as it complies with the code, whether it's existing or replacement. It is what it is. Where is our, so, but the design of the sign can still be under the purview of the, of the board, right? The materials, the construction, the shape, overall shape. It just has to be under 20 feet and within the dimensional standards. Is that right?
Right, right. I mean, there's some, obviously you can't, you know, control their, their content, things like that.
Right.
But, but right, you know, aesthetics, things, things of that nature are within your, you know, your, your planning board authority.
So the planning board may have an issue with the design of the sign, but may not necessarily have a concern with the square footage or the height. Right? Or wrong?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm following.
Can't they, can't the issues that the board have exist on their own? So maybe the board doesn't have a concern with the height. Maybe the board doesn't have a concern with the square footage, but maybe the board has a problem with the design.
Okay.
I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking. Can those three things, can those three things exist in separate lines?
Yes.
So can't we just say we have, we, we don't like the design of the sign?
Do you, do you have a, do you have a question for the applicant?
No, I'm asking, I'm just asking you if that's within our parameters.
Yes.
I, I mean, I could, I'm picking up what you're putting down. So if, if I could walk out of here with a conditional approval on 20 feet or less, 60 square feet, you know, or less, I'm willing to come back and do a design session. Like, I don't, you know, I'm not going to say, I don't love the sign. I'm a sign lover, but I, I, I'm out of time. I need.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you.
I need to come back with some, some consistent message or, I don't need a sign.
I understand.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have a leasing sign on the property. So, so that said, I don't know if that's even within the purview of what we're trying to accomplish tonight. But if there's dimensions, that could be more of the point of the discussion and a design element that we can come back and do a workshop with a subsequent approval, I'm, I'm comfortable to go down that road.
Brad, what's your, do you have like a specific issue?
I mean, I, I, I hear what Mr. Richards is saying with what we have done with other applicants. And, you know, that has been premised on the design of the sign primarily. So I'm, can't we take that same stance with the design of the sign and, and say that, you know, it's co-compliant, but we have a concern with the design? So come back with another design, design. And I'm, I'm, I'm asking and I'm asking what you guys think. Not, you know, stuck on this idea, but I just want to make sure we've looked at this from all facets because I think that the concerns that Mr. Richards bring are, brings to the table are valid. However, I also don't want to, I want to make sure that we're doing what's fair to the applicant as well.
100%, okay. Anybody else? So I guess a couple of comments I have is I think the applicant can go forward with what they proposed, right? And whatever the results are, the results are. I think they're being very accommodating by stating they're willing to consider this sign. And unless there's a specific design we want to put in front of them, I don't want to encumber them anymore with waiting for a sign we might like. I mean, I, I think they're putting something forward that is a compromise to what we did, to what they could do. And even legal tells us they can do. So I think we should move forward with this is my opinion.
My understanding is that the sign became part of the site plan at the request of the board. Didn't you vote for that?
Yeah, so what's the point?
Okay. So the site plan includes the sign.
Okay, but my point is, is he can go forward with this and we could rule however the board rules.
Well, he can go forward.
It can end up wherever it ends up, right? But he's being very accommodating by stating he would, he would go with something like this.
Right.
And I'm just saying we should consider that. That's what I'm stating. I don't know what it has to do with whether it's part of the site plan or not.
Okay.
I think we have something in front of us.
I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought you were saying he could go ahead with whatever he wanted to do.
Well, he can still, but at the end of the day, he's willing to do this and I think he's being very accommodating. And I think we should, we should rule on one of them tonight.
All right.
That's what I think. So I'm entitled to an opinion too. And I think they've been more than accommodating. We should, we should bring this to a closure is what I think. But the board can do what they want.
Yeah, I mean, this, this case has been adjourned for three months now. So I'm not feeling that we caused the timeline pressure.
I'm, I'm not saying we did, what I'm trying to say is we are where we are right now.
Right.
We need to make a decision. So I think we got to give them some direction, one way or the other. So what would the applicant like to do? And do you have a total square footage, just so I know?
The current square footage total is, what is it, 38.7?
It's 38.66. We rounded up to 40.
We put 40 square feet on the sign.
For both of them?
I do not have that rendering in front of me. If we have that, I can quickly, I can quickly calculate that.
I'll let you see it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have my phone, so I can't do it either.
Oh man, you're going to see all my chicken scratch notes on there and stuff.
Sorry, Mike.
We can put my chicken scratch on there too if you want.
All the nasty things I wrote about you.
I'm not reading that, man. Don't worry.
I'm sorry. Like, I didn't see anything bad.
It's okay. I know, I'm just messing. They're just doodles, Bernie. They're just doodles.
Do you want to add something?
Yeah, I just want to clarify a bit. So I, I mean, there's, there's, just looking at the, the code, there's in 235, section 235, 111, there's, there's very limited design authority discretion there. You can't necessarily, I guess my, to be clear is you can't, you know, have free rein to design the sign how you want. There's, there's a few points on, on design there. I think to kind of clarify our point from earlier, you know, given the, you know, the validly existing pole sign, I think, you know, our position that is that the discretion is limited. I understand that the consistency, but, you know, just want to clarify those points and, and, you know, obviously the, it's within the, you know, up to the, to the board to, to act.
What other design elements we could speak to?
Let's call it 50.
I'll let you do it back at the microphone.
Can I ask a question to staff? Is it possible that this applicant could go to the ZBA and get a very variance for an additional sign?
So.
Is there anything legally stopping them?
So the, if the applicant at a future date, when you're talking about for the Rachel's portion or any, if another freestanding, another freestanding sign would require ZBA approval. However, because it's also new signage, we would send them for signage approval to the planning board. So at that point, we could decide which way it goes. In other words, the staff could say, in this instance, it's a new sign on a site, so you're going to need both planning board approval for new sign because there's not an existing free sign there, freestanding sign. Plus you also have the benefit or need of going to the zoning board to get relief from that. So likely what we would do is have them start with the planning board because the planning board is going to have, you know, the, what the, this, you know, generally want to respond to what it looks like. what the, this, you know, generally wanna respond to what it looks like and where it sits on the site, um, and does it move forward, backwards, closer to the building? And then have them do the ZBA secondary once the planning board's generally on board with where it is. So both boards would likely be required for a new sign on that parcel.
And then just to the deputy attorney, would that be within our purview then, the things that were just described?
Um, I apologize, I,
The location of the sign and those sorts of elements.
Well, I think, I, and I don't know if I was, if I, if I recall or, or was involved yet, when you guys did, did the site plan, did you, did you approve this, um, in this location, just not with a sign design?
We didn't approve anything.
So, and I, I'll clarify that, um, the planning board granted the site plan approval based on and indicated that signage, all signage would have to come back for a set, their, its own application, because they didn't have signage, they didn't have signage packages ready for the building or the, the freestanding. The applicant was under the impression that the existing sign, um, at twelve thirty-three Eastwood Road could be utilized, reutilized, but the, what it was, the aesthetic final look of it was gonna be subject to the planning board's review. So there was a little miscommunication or misunderstanding about what exactly was allowed or not allowed. And so that's when town, town attorney yourself and Nate Vanderwall, we asked, okay, what, what exactly is the process here?
Right.
Um, so, at the time, the site plan shows the existing freestanding sign at twelve thirty-three. I don't believe there was any signage shown on that site plan for the Rachel's, or am I wrong about, I don't have it in front of me, I'm so sorry.
There was a, uh, current sign, the Ridge Retan Furniture sign.
The, so that just marks the, the current sign, but that, that current sign, now the lots are combined, is technically a pre-existing non-conforming sign. So you can't improve a pre-existing non-conforming without the benefit of getting comply, code conformance through the ZBA. And in this case, that my understanding is that sign is, um, in disrepair and could not be reused and would need to come down and start over, so that's where the planning board review could come in.
Okay.
So if the question was, could the ZBA just grant them the approval with no thought of what it looks like or how it feels on the property, we can ensure that it comes back to the planning board, because it's a new sign.
Right.
Yeah, the re-subdivision eliminated the need for multiple signs on the property, so this was the one.
So would anybody like to know what the code says in regards to design? Is it, would that be helpful? So, under, uh, two thirty-five dash one eleven, design, construction, and maintenance. All sh- signs shall be designed, constructed, and maintained in accordance with the following standards. At list three. A, all signs shall comply with applicable provisions of New York State Uniform Building Code and Electrical Code of the, of the town at all times. B, except for banners, flags, temporary signs, and window signs conforming in all respects with the requirements of this article, all signs shall be constructed of permanent materials and shall be permanently attached to the ground, a building or other structure by direct attachment to a rigid wall, frame, or structure. C, all signs shall be maintained in good structural condition in compliance with all building and electrical codes and in confer- in conformance with this code at all times. That's what it states. You're looking at me, so you got a question on that?
No, sir. We will meet those requirements.
So as applicants, what would you like to do at this point? Let's, let's get that clarified.
I, you candidly, I, I wanted to work through this process with the board, and I still do want to work through this process with the board. I'm hearing from board members that the stone, or excuse me, the brick base is a, a preferred option. I'm willing to go forward with that if that's something that I'm able to do. Um, I, I need, I need to come out of here with a decision, uh.
So if you want a decision, you gotta tell us which one you wanna go forward with.
Yeah, I think the, the, the one that you have in front of you, fifty square feet, uh, with the brick base, black colors, if there's any other criteria you need with that elevator, that rendering, we're happy to give you comments. Uh, but that's what we'd like to move forward with, in hopes that that shows our willingness to compromise work with what we're hearing and move this application forward.
Okay, so this is what the applicant's going forward with, just for clarity for the board. So are there any more questions regarding this particular sign?
I, a question, and I think that you might have gone through, that's what I missed, I might have missed this part. The location of the sign has been up, uh, is, uh, up, has, has or has not been, um, solidified as a result of our previous approval on the, um, site plan.
I'm gonna defer to the town on that one. So here it is.
So the, for, I, I believe that the, the sign, uh, let me grab, I apologize.
Brad, it's my, it's my understanding that, at least the way that we have historically acted on, you know, all signage must come back, essentially means no approval, at least in my eyes, I mean, and, and maybe, maybe as a board moving forward, will be much clearer when we state that. In my eyes, that meant that nothing related to the sign was approved.
That's my understanding also.
So.
And actually, that, that subject came up at workshop where we said that that sign was not included in the site plan approval.
So, in my mind, one of the reasons that we prefer the monument style sign is because it's more pedestrian friendly and more in s- in line with the scale that we want along the side of the road. If the applicant wants a code compliant sign that is twenty feet or however many feet tall and however, maybe it would be more appropriate if it were not in the same location.
I don't know how you open up that ball of wax though, without having a site plan, and the site is now in construction, and so I, 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 I don't know how you go there. I think at this point, the application in front of us is for the sign in the same location as it was, whether it be new posts or not.
Well, I thought that, that's why I asked whether or not.
It was, it was on the site plan, but whether or not we approved it there is the question I can't answer.
Yeah, it's, it's shown on the, on the site plan, Brad. It just said existing sign, I think, to be reused or something, which, again, in my mind, when we said everything had to come back, it meant everything has to come back, but the location was technically shown on the site plan. Whether it was approved or not is sort of a semantics argument, I think, at this point. But they're proposing to put it in the same spot.
Right, but the location of the sign is definitely something that I think is under the purview of the planning board. So if we feel like the sign, because of its size, would be better located in a different spot, I feel like that's also something that we could discuss. Maybe I'm the only one who feels that way.
I don't necessarily disagree. In my opinion, that ship has sailed, unfortunately, due to the, well, the.
That's what I was trying to find, if it had or had.
Well, I don't, we didn't intend it to sail, but the ship has sailed, in my mind, because if we put these guys off and say they've gotta come back in another month or another two months or whatever, because they've gotta do that, then that puts them in a whole different spot. I think we need to be much clearer in the future on how we write up signage must come back to the board and what exactly that means.
Yeah, but to that point, I think the application before us tonight is for this sign in the current location.
In the exact same location.
That's what I was trying to say before, is that at this point, that's the application that we have here.
Right.
So I think that's what we have to move forward with, unless they withdraw their application or something.
I am not in a position.
I know, I, I didn't mean that, man, I didn't mean that that's where you're headed, I'm just, now we're, now we're bored talking.
I'm sorry.
So, if, if the town would like to weigh in, I mean, it was on the site plan, I think it's kind of a gray area at this point, but you can, between both of you, possible.
So I, I, the, my understanding is that the applicant, my, and this again, is my understanding is the applicant thought they were coming back and they were gonna be able to reuse the existing sign. The planning board thought that they were, that was not the case, and that they could require a new sign in a, whenever location they deemed potent, or maybe in the same location but a new sign, or maybe in a new location, but that there'd be some opportunity to make change. It was based on that, um, that confusion, and then the question from the applicant about the whole process that caused us to take a look at it from a legal standpoint. And that's when Nate did the analysis in terms of past approvals, applicants were willing or yielded to the planning board's desire to either modify sign, move sign, require new sign, or not, some version of, or some combination thereof, but that didn't, up, in this case, the applicant had, was presenting something that is code compliant, and therefore, the board needs to re- acknowledge that and can't require them to take down a sign that is, would be code compliant. That's my understanding, and I'm not the attorney, so I, I'm, I'm going to.
I think she's gonna defer to you, is there anything?
No, that's, I mean, that's my, that's my understanding as well, and I, I think we're, we're aware of the issues, and obviously the, it's, 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 it's the board's decision on, uh, you know, on that.
But, I think we've been clear on what's code compliant, but can they have a code compliant sign? Can, can we say, you can have a code compliant sign, but it has to be here?
Yeah, Bradley, I, I, I think that, that's not necessarily the issue. The issue that, uh, we're talking about is whether this, this sign that was validly existing as a pole sign can be, i- it's, is that within the board's authority to say, well, now that you have to come back, you have to move it? Um, when it's, when it's already, you know, or, or, or change it substantially, um, when it's already a validly existing, uh, sign in, in that location.
Steve, that begs a question though, does the applicant intend on reusing the sign that's currently there with the brick?
So, so again, I hate to take a step back here, but I, this is, I've been going on four months now. The site plan, the confusion at day one was that the site plan was approved by Peter Vars, my engineer, with locations identified on the plan for the intent to reuse the signs that were there. That evolved, it turned into, now it's gotta be monuments, gotta get rid of those, gotta look like that. I have, I gave you my lease, I gave you everything I could, I went in with height requirements for tenants. Tenants didn't get the signage they needed for the building, it put even more pressure on this. I am in a position where I'm going to lose a tenant, and it will create significant damages to this project if I cannot secure a sign on this existing reused monument, pylon, whatever you wanna call it, twenty feet or under, sixty feet or, or, or less permitted by the code. I, I have, you know, according to my counsel, this is within the rights of the project as a shopping center. I need to get this approved. If you wanna put a brick base on it, I'm, I'm game, let's go. If you wanna change the color, I'm game. I'm, I can't be any more accommodating to what I'm trying to accomplish in the last four months of this effort. I need to move this project forward with this sign. I've never had this much challenge with a sign in any project I've ever gotten approved, but I'm willing to do whatever it is you guys need me to do to get an approval tonight. Um, that's the position I'm in, hat in hand.
Here's my question though, back to you again, are you going to be reusing this sign with the brick?
That was the intended application, and then it turned into.
So the application that you've been asked to approve is at the reuse of this sign?
So then I engaged with.
Evil, Mr. Evelyn.
Mr. Evelyn, and he said, we'd much prefer a, a sign that has a brick base. And I said, I'm willing to go down that road and accommodate that, that, you know, request. Would I be in a position to build that sign and replace the entire sign in its entirety? Cause then I could do that in a warehouse and not have to deal with, with the masonry elements of the winter, which aren't ideal, and then I'll bring the sign to the site and install it. That would require a new sign. Then I get thrown into another category, well, then we can move the sign and it's not approved in the location. I don't wanna go down rabbit holes anymore, I need an approval. So whatever it is, you need me to do.
I understand what you're saying to me right now.
Okay.
All right, and I think that answers the question that I had.
So for clarity, what you're putting before the board is, is this sign, which you're gonna build off-site and then install?
I will replace it. If I can't replace it, cause it turns into something else, I will not replace it. I'll reuse it. I do not wanna put myself in a position where a nuance can create a hardship. But yes, I'm sorry, to answer your question. If this is conducive to the effort we're all trying, I'm trying to accomplish tonight, I'll put a base, stone sign, and replace it with a new sign. At fifty square feet, not to be taller than twenty feet. Any other comments to add here? Color black? I, yeah, I'm, 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 I take direction well, I'm willing to work with whatever.
Hey, Ber- I'm, uh.
Yeah, Mr. Evelyn, like.
I'm gonna stop you real quick, if that's okay.
Sure.
Bernie, if you, you have my plan in front of you there.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're okay. Total overall height of sign on that plan is a hundred and eighty-three point eight inches, correct?
I got a hundred and eighty-three.
Pointy.
And it goes up to eighty-six, so here. Walk him back down.
It's the same height that's on this.
Oh, point eight, yes, point eight.
So it's the same, so, so if this is what gets approved, I just wanna make sure you're on the right page here, Matt, cause you're saying no less than twenty feet.
I, that's what the code.
Yep, yep, no, no, I, if, if this.
I'm good with this height.
This gets approved is fifteen foot three inches.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's, I'm not looking for that, I want this.
Okay, you want this.
So the Evelyn compromises the, uh, drawing as submitted.
This one right here.
Okay.
Yep, this is the Evelyn compromise, we can call it that. Evelyn compromised with twenty twenty-one.
I think that's, I think that's a nice, they, it has a nice ring to it, Mr. Evelyn.
I've always wanted my name attached to something, and I guess this is gonna be it, and I'm okay with it.
Any, any more questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I'd like to open up the public hearing, so if you guys, you need to take a seat while we do that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak to this application? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. All right. So, is anybody in objection to moving forward with Seeker? I should probably wait for Mary.
It's a type two, so Seeker is.
It's a type two, so we don't have to, so.
Type two, yeah.
And I think we should wait for Mary to, to do the, to vote. Sorry about that. Mr. Evelyn, would you be opposed to making the motion? To make sure that you're, you have the sheet in front of you now.
I can make the motion.
Okay, but hold on for a second.
We were just about to bring on the entertainment, Mary. I've been practicing my dad jokes.
We're gonna start the motion. Okay.
You pointed me. Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
Yes, please.
All right, pertaining to case PB twenty twenty-one oh nine one, um, uh, the applicant has submitted, uh, a previous plan dated last revision ten twelve twenty-one. In accordance with that plan, I propose that we approve his application. Does that cover everything, Carrie?
It does, you referenced the plan, and we have it in the record, so that'll be sufficient.
It's not stamped, do you have a stamp? It's not stamped, do you have a stamp date on your plan?
So we had one that was, we had, um forgive me, I have multiple copies in here. I believe the the one that was part of Michelle's record um was dated as received. You're with me for a moment. We haven't received, our file copy was received ten eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay.
But the the reference on the title block that you.
Okay.
Is the same.
Okay, uh with one condition, that um the sign not be lit more than one hour before opening of business and must be extinguished two hours after closing.
A second.
Hold on one second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Negative.
I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Any area?
What in here? That means he can't pass it. Oh, no, wait.
Three, I got four.
Yes, okay.
I got, so with a vote of four ayes, one nay, one abstain, this passes. Thank you. Much luck with the success of your business. Thank you. Call the next case, please.
Certainly. Case number PB twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash one. Upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying and Planning, PLLC, acting as agent for PEM LLC for preliminary slash final site plan approval to renovate the facade and interior configuration of the existing structure to expand the convenience store and remove the vehicle repair shop on premises five seventy-five Titus Avenue in a mixed.
All set. Uh getting to Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's John Sharaba with Land Tech. With me this evening is Lou Terranoli, Director of Real Estate for Quickleys. Uh this evening, we're looking forward to presenting the hopefully second store for Quickleys in the town of Aurora Nique. Talking specifically the corner of Hudson and Titus. Uh this site is about three tenths an acre size and is an existing mobile station and service station. And essentially what we're proposing to do is just remodel this this facility. We're not proposing any new utility connections, no new curb cuts. Um basically remodel, taking the old service application out and remodel this twenty-two hundred square foot building to a convenience store. Uh the canopy canopies will remain in the same uh location. Um due to the the loss of the service area, we have to um place some additional parking on the site. But essentially, we're retooling the the property and um more of an architectural project than anything else. Um I, we did have some good dialogue during the workshop meeting, I hope that you were able to get my updated memo I submitted to the town last Wednesday. Uh where I clarified our points of conversation.
I don't have that memo, I don't have it either.
We got it, I believe we got it electronically.
Yes.
Did you get elec- electronically, I I do apologize, did is it printed in your packet? Did the materials that?
I'll go through it briefly if you don't mind.
And I'll and I'll prepare print, I'm sorry.
Yep, no problem.
Don was assisting this afternoon and I I thought that was included.
Yes. One of the main things we talked about at the concert, at the workshop was the canopy. And we had our original canopy plan and we submitted with our application was basically rebranding, the existing canopies were there. Um and you asked us if, hey, we just went through this exercise on the Culver Road Quickleys. We really want the parapet style uh on that facility, so we have done that. Uh we are going with that canopy style. Um and again, we submitted it electronically, we've had update updated elevations of that canopy uh were provided. So we agree with that and look forward to moving with that, through that with you.
This'll look just like Culver Road then?
Correct. Um you asked if uh air pump could be to remain, so we are proposing an air pump. Uh that's gonna be closer to the dumpster area, kinda opposite where it is today. Uh the existing pole sign will be removed and as my memo stated, we are rescinding our sign application as it relates to this application tonight. Uh there are elements that are on the plan and we discussed at workshop, those elements are, there'll be a signage for Quickleys on the east elevation of the building. And we are looking to propose a monument sign at the corner of Titus and Hudson. Uh consistent with the board's efforts, but again, we're not gonna touch that dragon tonight, we'll let that lie. And uh but it is gonna be consistent with the right aid, we're familiar with what you want and we'll be looking forward to submitting that under a different cover. Um I don't know if Carrie wants to weigh in on the special permit requirements if needed on this site. Have you found anything out on this yet, Carrie?
Um I, we had checked the records and there was a special use permit issued previously and the gas station that stays with the land.
Okay.
Um so it continues to be operating as a um as a gas station. And that would be the only thing that would be subject to the special use permit.
Great, thank you. Um the next thing we talked about uh was the confirmation of hours of operation. Ninety percent of the Quickly stores operate uh twenty-four seven. Um some of them have car washes and air as consistent with the Culver Road application, this does not. So we really don't have any noise creating uh situation, so we have just the pumps and the C store. So we are looking to see if we can continue with the the twenty-four hour operation, I'm sure we can discuss that in a few minutes as well. Um how many employees shift, we'll have a maximum of three employees per shift for this operation. Um we've added some more dimensions to the site plan, so we can look at traffic patterns and things like that. The board mentioned that we uh like gooseneck lighting, so those will be incorporated, we've added those to the site plan. And um that'll be also shown with any future lighting of the sign on the building. Um we are gonna propose the crosswalk that comes from the building north to Titus Avenue that will be concrete. Um another issue that came up during our workshop was the conflict between um the vehicles along the sidewalk on Hudson. Historically, there's been a situation where cars will try to stack two cars east of the pump island. So to alleviate that, we came up with a way that we thought was kinda unique, that we're gonna use planter boxes, this is a concrete planter box. I believe it's two foot wide by two foot high and eight feet long. Substantial um box that's gonna be uh the concrete in the same color of the of the building. Uh we'll plant seasonal flowers in that. We do want it mobile at this point, just to see if it's this is working or we have to revise it. Uh we've used this this these type of structures in other projects and I think they'll work very well, so I think you'll be pleased with that. Um and that's kinda really, other than signage that we that we have had to discuss. We have got comments from Monroe County DRC. The bulk of the comments are Monroe County DOT comments. As I mentioned at the preliminary, at the start of my my presentation, we're not changing anything. Um DOT is saying, hey, change this, change that. Um your your openings are too big, your openings are too small, so we have to have some dialogue with them. But again, this is an existing gas station, we're proposing a gas station, we're not changing anything. The only physical change or the reason we need a permit by the Monroe County DOT is for a concrete sidewalk that um trans goes from the corner and goes to their western property line. Uh that was, that sidewalk is only proposed by the request of the town and uh we have no problem putting it in. Other than that, the the um the comments are very minor in nature from Monroe County DOT, so we'll have a dialogue with them. Uh we also got uh comments this evening uh from HIPAA. And I think that we addressed everything, I don't see any showstoppers. They did allude to hours of operation and things such as that, but I think we um agree with some of their comments, or most of their comments. And uh I think we've got a project that's gonna be look pretty good and I look forward to any comments you have.
So I have to ask, was there an updated site plan provided with the the sheets, the comments?
Um I'm I'm printing those out right now and I do apologize.
Only reason I ask is I I like everything I heard, but I just wanna make sure it's reflected that way.
Um as I'm, as we're sitting here.
I can put a current plan on the board if you like, I can go through it.
Okay.
And I'll go grab the printed copies in a moment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is there anything you want me to point out on the plan?
No, I I appreciate the canopies.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the applicant, are you okay if I?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Uh John, you mentioned that you're gonna be rescinding your sign request, sign package request?
Correct.
Does that include location of monument sign as well?
That's fine, um there's not a lot of room on the site. I think the the practical location's at the corner, but we can revisit that.
Okay, so just for the record, if we are approving the site plan, we are not approving the location of the monument sign.
Does that also include building mounted sign?
Yes, we only currently show one. Um you know, I I we do want some flexibility, I think the only other direction would be along the the Titus Avenue on the north elevation. But we haven't reviewed the square footage requirements.
Any other questions from board members?
John, just to clarify, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer, there's no drive-through on this, right?
No drive-through, no vacuums.
And then you're gonna do it?
I I, you know, after we left that workshop, I thought again and I thought the the um northernmost um curb cut on Hudson Avenue. And I thought, well, maybe Monroe County DOT will say something about it and they did. Uh so I I agree, uh that's a that's a, I don't know why it's there in the first place. It it seems like a bad location, but I also understand that that's not necessarily something that you were thinking about getting into. Um so I I I I just wanna say that I do think that that is a sticky situation. I I do agree with the comment that MC DOT put in the paper and also the width of the the uh in the ingress and egress on Titus. I think those are reasonable things, so I I just wanna highlight that, stick a pin in it and I guess I'm interested to see what the two of you guys work out with that, um cause I I it's it's kinda dicey, especially that northern um curb cut. Um the sightlines aren't good, if you're trying to pull out and go onto Cooper Road, there's no room to stack, it's not good.
Yeah, no, I I understand your comments and you know, Mr. Raymond's a a local Aurora Nique resident, so I I know it's near and dear to his heart as well. So I think we'll be doing some arm wrestling and I think whatever, you know, he's gonna take what the county wants, you know, so we're gonna need to get a permit. So if we get a, hopefully get a contingent approval on Monroe County DOT, I think you'll be pleased at the end that we've explored every possibility.
And we're also open to adjusting the width on Titus.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think they're reasonable comments, but I also understand the position that you're in.
Yeah.
Um the other thing, I I think that the hip comment about the number of bollards that are in the facade of the um the building is relevant, I'm wondering if you could look at that, a lot of times they're never shown in the renderings. And then when we, the the building goes up and then all of a sudden, there's all these bollards in the front, so if that, if it is possible to reduce those. And then the only other thing that I saw was that there is that same problem with the vehicles parking half on the sidewalk, half on the pavement um in the area to the south uh where you have the parking. So right, right there, there's like a little less than half a space. Um I'm pretty confident that somebody will try to park there, I I've, they do now, so maybe that could be another spot for one of those planters. Those are the only three, those are the only things that really jumped out to me. Um otherwise, I think that it's a nice looking design and thank you for taking our feedback.
So the, and I see your point on that, um putting another planter in that area. The issue is that we see having a um garbage truck come and
Oh.
Go in and navigate, so we already have to have them come in after hours
In order to be there.
Early to get in there, cause they have to drive straight through and backing out. I mean, we can hatch it, we can do things so they don't park on it.
Okay.
But I think you'll, yeah.
You know, just a no parking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Highly effective, I'm sure.
But I think in my history with Quickleys, that if it becomes something, I mean, one phone call to Lou or Ken
Okay.
And that's, that planter could go up, we we know what you're concerned.
Any other questions?
Hey John, have you included snow storage on your plans?
Not really, it doesn't snow there.
I gotcha.
So it was snow.
I don't live that far away, it snows in my house.
Right, it's a, it's gonna be an active site, snow's gonna have to be taken off of here. It's, there's, every inch is utilized.
Yeah.
Um so they're aware of it, um they've done that in other facilities. And it's kinda, these infill sites, we have another one we did in Fairport, same kinda thing, in a village atmosphere, it's gonna have to be hauled off.
So it'll be it's snow removal, not snow?
Correct.
Okay, awesome.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I think if you wanna take a seat, we'll open it up for public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to this uh application? Please come to the podium, state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Burns and I live at one ninety-nine Bellhurst Drive. I'm here this evening as co-chair of Helping Aurora Nique Plan for Progress, the HIP group. A community stakeholder group that's worked tirelessly for almost twenty-five years on the renaissance and economic improvement of the Titus Cooper Hudson neighborhood. Um we really appreciate that Quickleys is interested in redeveloping the current Hudson Titus mobile location and we support this application. Uh we appreciate the applicant's intention to detail and really proposing a very attractive adaptive reuse building for this very prominent corner of our town. Um we just had a um a few comments and um related to the the canopies. We appreciate the smaller graphic um that has been agreed to. Um the only thing we didn't see here um in the detail of the building and the rendering, there isn't any detail to indicate what the graphics will be on the actual pumps themselves. And in our experience, um pump graphics can be very distracting. And we ask that these graphics also meet the design guidelines for this mixed-use commercial district. Um in terms of site amenities, um we really like the pair of concrete planters and we really think this is gonna be helpful to limit conflict with pedestrians near the ingress and egress for the gas islands. Um as um Mr. Huber mentioned, we ask that the number of bollards on the east side of the building be reduced by half from twelve to seven. Seven, we feel will be enough to protect the exterior of the building without interfering with the aesthetic appearance. Um we also appreciate Quickleys retaining the current air pump um at the station, we know it's gonna get moved. But um this is used a lot um at this location by motorists and bicyclists. Um so we appreciate that being retained. Um we also saw on the site plan that there's a bike rack proposed. Um we just wondered what that bike rack might look like, but really appreciate because there's a lot of bicyclists in this neighborhood. So just if we could see what the photo of this might look like. Um we also asked that Quickleys retain the gate on the north side of the building for RG&E to access the meter for the five sixty-three Titus Avenue building. Um so there wasn't any indication on the site plan for that. Um in terms of the concrete sidewalk, we're grateful that Quickleys will be constructing a sidewalk across their property for pedestrians to connect along Titus to Hudson Avenue. And for durability, we appreciate that um Mr. Sharaba indicated tonight that that will be constructed of concrete. Uh because that does see a lot of action with snow plowing and pedestrian traffic. Um we also ask that the sidewalk work be coordinated with the planned replacement of the sidewalk in front of the art center to minimize issues where the two portions of the sidewalk will meet as well as to minimize the time during which the sidewalk is out of service. Um and we saw the signage will be a a later um application. We thank you also for removing snow, um because this this corner does get kinda tenuous with snow storage. Uh business hours, um as was mentioned, um in keeping with other businesses that border on this dense residential neighborhood, we ask that the operation hours for the station. we ask that the operation hours for the station be limited and not be allowed to be open 24 hours. Rite Aid Pharmacy across the street from this proposed Quiklys is open Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Sundays, they are open 9:00 to 8:00. George and Bob's Mobile Service Station on St. Paul also borders a dense residential neighborhood, and their hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 6:00 30 p.m., and closed on Sundays. So, just to give a couple of benchmarks there. We appreciate this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
And just to confirm, since there's no special use permit needed for this, we really don't have any purview over hours of operation. Is that right?
Yeah, my understanding, the planning board doesn't, has purview over the operation of the site and to the extent, but not operational control.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood.
I'm sorry, Bradley, did you say we do not have any purview over the hours of operation?
Hours of operation would be something that's either set forth in our town code. There are some operations that are limited to the, to the hours of operation, or it would be something that could be a condition that's imposed as part of a special use permit through the town board or through whatever board was issuing the special use permit. But my understanding is that, that the planning board doesn't have purview over that operational function.
So, do they need anything to do 24 hours, or not?
I'll, I'll ver, we can verify that with the, the town attorney. I don't believe they would, based on the code requirements.
So, the hours are not part of this application tonight?
Correct.
Do we, do we know what the, the existing specialties?
I, I was gonna say, that's the only thing that we'll take a look at, if it specified hours of operation. Our experience is that in, in the, in the past, the specialties permits didn't address the hours of operation, so we can, we'll take a look at that. And if they need to revisit with the town board on that matter, we'll have them do that.
I can understand why it would be a concern of the neighbors, and I just wanted to make sure that people who are watching understand that that's not necess, at least as far as we know right now, it's not something that we have purview of.
Yeah, and we can, we can double-check the, the, the past approvals to, to determine whether or not hours of operation were explored, and then if they need to expand the special use permit, based on that, we can advise them on the process.
Any other questions? So, we did the public meeting, correct? So, would somebody like to make a motion? First off, let me go back. There's seeker.
And actually, I'll let, I'll let the board know that this, although this is a renovation of an, of an existing site, there is a type 2 under, under seeker, because there's a provision where remodeling, or remodeling or renovation of existing commercial mixed-use structures is not subject to further seeker.
Hey, hey, Bernie?
Yes?
Can the applicant, I have one more question for the applicant.
No problem.
And can they come up and respond to Ann's comments?
Sure. John Shaba, just briefly looking at Ann's comments, bollards, we have no issue reducing that amount. Sidewalk connectivity, we'll do the best we can. I don't know the pace of whoever else is working, or if the town wants us to bond the sidewalk money and let them do it in the future. We have no intention to fence in the area so that the meters are blocked. Those are the only things I think we had some discrepancy in. Other than that, I think we're in good shape, I believe.
Uh, she also asked about pump graphics?
That's a slippery slope. I mean, cause all these, they're hired by, they're, you know, they're by Franchise Mobile or Sunoco, whoever they hire. They are gonna be digital, you know, there's, it's, this is the world we live in. They're not, I don't know what that is in the zoning district, so we have to come back for a variance for digital pump signs, but I can't really speak to the.
And you don't know if there'll be audio attached to it?
I don't, uh, you know, on the newer signs, we do a little bit. There is audio.
Oh, like the, the?
The little screen that plays and, you know, coming in and out.
And the ads and the?
Yep.
Don't we have a, don't we have a moving graphics ordinance in this area? We've been through this, we went through this with the art center.
The art center, we said that they could not use it as a billboard, because in the code, they designed billboard as like something that you rent out. We did that on the art center, if I remember correctly, and also the IUCC, they have an additional signage underneath there, and we said that they could put up the sign for the nursery school, but that they couldn't, you know, take other, take, which, television, I mean, I don't know exactly how those things work and how it's billed or what comes across it, but I, I would imagine it's kinda like a billboard under the code. I mean, maybe you can explain?
I, I know from my limited knowledge of pumping gas at Quiklys, I mean, it's about an eight-inch screen, and you know, it is marketing for their, for their business. I, I think all the pumps are going that way. As we all know, they're all doing some kinda marketing. I don't think they're that loud. If you'd like to discuss it further at the signage application, we can give you details at that point. I, you know, kinda wiped our, our plate clean of signage and those elements for the site plan.
Yeah, we think that's just the way John described it. Sometimes there's some news and sports, but they, the actual volume could be controlled, and we could come back and work with our signage package and let you know about the decibels and all things like. But it would be the most up-to-date, you know, mobile product dispensers that are, that are on the market. It would be, you know, a substantial investment in the site. It wouldn't be happening, I think we'd be using the existing pumps for quite a while.
I do know that we have another, like, a couple in front of us that is not going to be.
Specifically asked us, and they're not.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not a fan of this audio at all.
Well, I, I would be.
And it can be shut off.
I, I would say if, if all signage is coming back, it can come back, but I can tell you right now, my, my stance is that it's not appropriate for this location. That would be my stance on the, on the screens and audio.
Is that lumped under signage, Carrie?
That's a great question. I'd have to take a look. I think, I'd have to look at the, the parameters for this district, and I do apologize, in order for me to print the materials, I'd bring my laptop up with me. It doesn't print remotely from here, and I'll have to go grab it again, just so I can take a closer look. What we can do is, if it's, if, that could be something, if, if the applicant wants to come back and has some leeway on that particular issue, that could be something that you revisit as part of the signage application that would be coming back secondarily. Since it's, it's, that could be something that's, the pumps are like the, obviously, the pumps are where the pumps are going to be. They're not proposing any changes, so you could address that as part of the signage application. And we, to the extent that it might not be signage, I can find out for you. I, I'd have to take a closer look at the, at the code for that particular.
Yeah, cause that drills down to like these digital signs on top of the pumps. Isn't that signage? Right, and that's?
And in this, this district, the, the, in terms of the numbers and the types and the thing, all the things, it's blank on the tables. Because in this district, the, the planning board has a lot of leeway to disc, to discern what and where, and what it looks like, and how it should be designed. So, to the extent that it doesn't conform with either the, the master plan guidance that's, that's referenced by code for this district, and/or just in general, the other design parameters that are included. And I'm, Brad is probably turning to the.
Did you hear that binder hit the desk?
Thank you, I, cause I don't have my, my laptop. I'll run up and grab it again in between, but.
I'm looking to see what they say for guidelines, but you know, I've been through these a number of times, and I, I mean, I don't really remember seeing anything about this sort of application. That's why everyone's kind of wondering.
Yeah, and I think this is also newer technology, and so we can take a look at it, and if the board is comfortable having them revisit that as part of the sign application.
Sure.
Does, can, just as a clarification, does the, does the, the screen, when it's doing the advertising, does periodically Quiklys pop up as part of like the audio? Is that part of the?
Yeah, it could. We could also, we're, we would like to address that as part of the signage package, and maybe we end up just redoing the canopies and seeing what we have there too.
Okay.
We'll take a look at that. If we could have that as part of the signage package, that would, that would be great.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna find it in, in any code. I mean, you get in, it's, it's a new technology. Even, it's like doing, you know, the bank chase, you know, did you look at the ATM? You know, how did that work? You don't count that in your signage. It's a part of their business, so, you know, I think with loose side, we'll work with you at the signage level. We're hoping to get site plan approval this evening.
The ATM doesn't sing at me when I'm getting my.
Well, you got a lot of money in there.
No, no, I think that's the problem. It just yells. John, I have one more question for you. You have shown us this very nice wall-mounted light, but it, it's not shown on the plan where those are gonna be, I don't believe.
It is not.
And also, are there, are there, there are lights, like parking lot light? I don't know how to describe pole-mounted lights in the parking lot. Did you do a lighting plan for it?
We did not. Those pole-mounted lights are actually in the, in the right of way on the poles. We're not, they're only proposing the soffit-mounted lights that are, you know, so I think.
So, there is this one here that's on the eastern property line? There? Nope, right there. About halfway up, right there.
Yeah, that's a watermelon.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry, I, I. Okay, the ones on, under the soffits are gonna be these goosnecks?
So, the, the goose neck lighting is intimately involved, entwined with the signage. So, we were gonna show you the updated elevations with the signage package, so we can show you how we're gonna light the sign. The only other goosnecks, it's gonna, the only other lighting is directly down from the awning. There's like a four-foot awning that's gonna be.
And so, there's soffit lights that are in the awning? Okay. Are you changing out the lights under the canopy?
I believe so. With this kind of extensive renovation, I think that'll, that'll change.
We're gonna want a lighting plan for that, John.
Okay.
The sign, if anyone's interested, the sign guidelines says unique for, making sure I got the right one here. Encourage building, encourage use of building signs on buildings that include only the business name, address, function, and logo. Coordinate the placement of signs with the building design and the signs on the adjacent buildings, utilities, and vegetation. Locate wall-mounted signs between the top of the first floor openings and the second floor window sills. Eliminate the use of interior lit signs because they produce glare and uncomfortable light levels for pedestrians. Discourage use of building colors and facade treatments that brand the building, or use the structure as a form of, form of sign. So, I mean, I don't necessarily think that they had a gas station in mind when they were writing these, but that, those are the guidelines, in case it's helpful to anybody.
So, I wanna do a point of order. I'm not sure I closed the meeting, cause we got the distribution of materials in between. But I'm hearing some things that say we might be keeping this open, cause we need a lighting plan and other things.
Just, just the public hearing?
I'm talking about the public hearing. So, how does the board feel about closing the public hearing or keeping it open?
Is it open?
I think it's still open.
It's still open. You did not close it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I didn't close it. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I was just saying it is still open. You did not close it.
Yeah, I didn't think I closed it.
I, I would be okay with closing it, but that's just me.
Rest of the board?
I'm fine with closing it.
Okay. So, I'm gonna close the public hearing. All right. So, moving on, I did, when you gave your explanation, did you talk about the bollards, reducing them?
Yes, we have no problem doing that.
Okay, and about providing a bike rack description?
Yeah, we'll have that. It's basically a, it's a red Q metal, kinda like near the Cooper Dell, like how they have the bike. This'll be a Q. We've used that before.
Okay, thank you. All right, and are we convinced now that the pump, audio, and signs will be part of the signage package, and they're not being approved tonight?
That would certainly be one of my conditions if I was making a motion.
Okay. And applicant has no issue with that?
No problem.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not for the applicant.
Yeah, I would really wanna know what direction you're going with on that.
On the pumps themselves?
Yeah, the, the, the visual and the audio part of that. I mean, are you gonna stick with what you got, and that's all you're gonna come back with us?
We don't have anything.
Pardon?
We haven't provided you anything yet.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll do that.
He did tell me on the record that it's going to have audio and it's going to have TV.
Well, we could, but would I, now that I've heard all the comments, we'd like to digest those and come back and try to show you something that'll meet your expectations.
Okay.
Are you having a TV or a monitor to monitor what's going on?
Yeah, the pump?
Yeah.
They're typically just monitors that have a predisposed feed to them.
You see that at most gas stations now.
At the burn dairy alone.
I, I'm, I'm really interested in what they decide, what they're gonna figure out with the curb cuts with Monroe County, and I think that a change in those curb cuts could impact the site design. I, you know, I, I'd be open to, I'd support maybe a preliminary site plan approval. But I, I don't know if I personally feel comfortable with final, with those curb cuts being up in the air.
I'd be okay with a preliminary, also with some conditions that we get some answers.
I, I'm not opposed to preliminary either, cause I think the lighting plan's gonna come up as an issue.
I was being also generous with preliminary. If other people don't feel that they want, if they just wanna wait, then I would be open to that too. I was trying to keep things moving along for the applicant, because overall, I think that it's a good design, but there are some pieces that I'm a little concerned about, is all I'm trying to say.
Yeah. I understand the county's comments about the curb cuts. Again, we're taking this existing facility, and if they just bought it and didn't touch it, they could operate as is. We are gonna work with the DOT and see if we can make an arrangement that works well. I don't see any planning issues. We can't really change the pump location. We can't change the building location. I don't see any pump planning issues that those will have, other than the fact that the DOT, who's the experts in that access, in the access to their roads, is happy. So, we are gonna have to do that, cause we have to get a permit from them. To that end, we'll, we'll work to that. As far as the lighting plan, it's, it's, if this is not the most basic lighting plan, the canopy as it is, light is all down. We'll, we'll show, you know, the, the canopy change was something that we did based on the workshop we had two weeks ago. I don't see the lighting elements being significant. They are gonna meet town standards, directed down, not off-site. So, you know, like obviously, we'd love to have preliminary. We'd like to have final. Obviously, contracts are the issue, but.
We would appreciate the preliminary. And we would go and address these comments and come back to the board.
Okay. Thank you for the input. Is there any other comments there?
No, I mean, lighting is important to me. I understand what you're saying, John, and I know that these will be full cutoff, cause they'll be underneath the canopy.
Yep.
They do need to be pretty artfully designed and, and the right fixtures put in, because they will wanna spill off this property, very much so.
Right.
So, I think, I think lighting is a pretty important piece at this corner. So, I mean, I, I would support a preliminary.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicants? Applicant have anything else to present?
No, we appreciate the time.
Okay. With that, you can have a seat. Anybody like to make a motion? This is a type 2 action, as Carrie explained, so.
On PV 2021-11-1, that we grant a preliminary approval based on the outcomes of the questions to the board regarding a lighting plan, the bollards, the negotiations over the curb cut on Hudson Avenue in the north part of the property, and.
I know that they said this, but I wanna make sure that we get it in the record, because I don't think that the drawings that we have in front of us are updated, but it shouldn't, that the, there were other things that they made, that they said that they would do. So, they're gonna change the pedestrian access from striped to concrete. And I actually think that's the only thing that's, they said that they would change that's not on a site plan in front of us. Is that right? Does anybody else?
That's my recollection.
Okay. Cause I, I know that once we give a, we, we really can't go back to the. Okay. 'Cause I, I know that once we give a, we, we really can't go back to the things that we've already approved, and it's not on the paper.
Do we need to say anything about the sign and the location of the sign?
And.
Go ahead, give it your motion.
Okay. Um, that all signage, including any signage associated with the gas pumps, come back to this board for approval.
Approval does not include the location.
Can, can, yeah, can we just say for all aspects, including size, location, color?
Yep.
Lighting, et cetera?
Yes. We have a lot more leeway in this district.
I, I understand, I know.
All aspects, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I just said all aspects, including size, location, colors, lighting, et cetera.
So, um, all signage, including all aspects, all signage slash all aspects, including size, location, colors, et cetera.
Yeah, but can we make sure that the pumps go in there?
Yeah.
I mean, that was a bone of contention.
Specifically, maybe something about.
Note includes pumps, signage, and audio.
Yeah, because I think maybe there might be a gray area, whether that's even signage.
Any others? With that, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstains? And we have one absent. Thank you. We look forward to this project. Next case?
The ne, the next case is a tabled item. Uh, for this next one, uh, the public hearing was closed at the last meeting. It's PB 2021-08-4, upon the matter of request by Sunnyburn Sales Incorporated for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a forty-two, four thousand two hundred and thirty-two square foot burn dairy retail store and deli and fueling facility with a freestanding fuel canopy and fuel pumps on premises twenty-one eighty East Ridge Road in a C-business district. Um, I will note you all received updated plans. The only change was the, um, addition of the landscaping details on the southwest corner of the property, and that's really the only change that was made to the, to the plan. All other, my understanding is all other comments and notes from the planning board have been incorporated into the planned documents submitted.
Okay.
And I would make a motion that we lift this item for consideration.
Do I have a second? Yep.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nay? No absent, no abstains? Okay. So, based on that, Carrie, since there's minimal changes, are we just gonna move forward, and you're gonna go over Seeker for us?
I certainly can. So your secret documents, if you go back in your, I think we.
Let me just ask a question first. Does the board have any other questions for the town prior to that?
And the applicant is here, but didn't, but because there are no changes, didn't come up to chat about it. So if there's any other dish, uh, extra questions or things, certainly.
Now's the time, if anybody has any final questions.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Do you wanna make the comment with the applicant up here?
It is to the applicant, but they don't have to come up here, because they don't have to respond. You can just nod. Um, I just wanna say that, uh, I'm looking over the plantings that are on this landscaping plan, and they're fantastic. So whoever your landscape architect is, uh, give him a pat on the back. He or she, a pat on the back. That's all.
So for the record, it was a thumbs up, not a nod?
For the record, it was a thumbs up and a nod, and he looked very appreciative.
Carrie, would you like to go over the seeker, please?
Love to. I'm looking forward to Michelle's in the binder, and I do apologize.
I have a copy here, if you need it.
Oh, I may have one here as well. I have it here as well. So this is an unlisted action, uh, for the purposes of Seeker. Um, in looking at the, the project, um, we're gonna, in determining the potential impact, um, potential impacts to land use and community character, the proposed action site plan would allow for the development of convenience store with gas station and associated pumps. Um, the site was formerly operated as a public library, with a building and parking lot for at least a hundred and ten vehicles. From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, it was vacated, it was, the vacated library was used as a temporary Department of Public Works facility while the new DPW campus was being developed. The use of the site included occupancy of the building and parking of wide range, and parking of a wide range of DPW vehicles and equipment. The site was operated during regular business hours, however, weekend and overnight hours of operation and use were required when DPW crews needed to respond for various, um, activities. Uh, the site, as proposed, is laid out in a way that positions gasoline pumps near the commercial corridor and far from residents to the north, um, with retail facility, boundary fencing, and landscaping serving as a buffer. Now, given the past uses of the parcel, the adjacent uses of land in the vicinity of the project site, and the proposed layout of the site on a major commercial roadway, the proposed changes on the site will have, uh, will, um, not result in a significant change to the intensity of land use in the area. The project's located on a primary commercial corridor and is bounded by a variety of commercial uses in close proximity. Um, the New York State Handbook, um, DEC Handbook provides the following guidance when evaluating the impact on community character. Evaluation of potential impacts upon community neighborhood character is often difficult to define. By quantitative measures, courts have supported reliance on a municipality's comprehensive plan and zoning um, as an expression of the community's desire of future state of the character. Um, the comprehensive plan, and we cite in the Part III analysis, multiple places that support this type of development and this type of zoning on this corridor. So then going on to other, other categories of potential impact, um, it's not located in close proximity or any proximity to any New York State regulated water bodies, um, with respect to the impact of land. The project will be governed by a stormwater pollution prevention plan that's gonna be monitored, and so the project will have to be compliant with all applicable state regulations as it results to, um, both during construction and post-construction conditions. Um, obviously during the site work, there's gonna be construction and alteration of land. However, it is gonna be monitored to make sure it's conforming with, um, all applicable regulations and the guidance of the SWIP. Potential impacts to traffic, um, in considering the proposed site plan, the planning board has to consider the development's impact on traffic. The traffic study, um, submitted by the consultant, um, dated July twenty, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the conclusion of that study, I summarize that for you, indicates that the additional traffic generated by the, by the proposed development will have no notable or significant impact on traffic operations on East Ridge Road or Ridgewood Drive. Um, the, the development will only have one or two vehicles entering and exiting each of the site driveways during each cycle of the adjacent traffic signal. Um, there's app, ample gaps in traffic to accommodate the turning movements. Um, and then further, Monroe County Department of Transportation is a permitting agency for the existing curb cut on East Ridge Road. Um, and they've, and their findings are, they supported the, um, the applicant's analysis of traffic impact. The town engineer has reviewed the report and concurs with the findings of the impacts to the ingress, egress points. And the town's Commissioner of Public Works can mitigate any issues related to large truck access along Ridgewood Drive, um, with limitations that he can impose as the Commissioner of Public Works, and has expressed, I believe in writing to the board, that he would do so. Um, we look at potential impacts of light, odor, uh, odor or noise. Um, it's gonna generate some noise with the opening of a retail facility, however, based on the memo submitted to, by the applicant. The noise associated with the convenience store compressors, which are the same as another location recently constructed, will at most generate decibels akin to a vacuum cleaner or shower at two feet from the units. The decibel, decibel level decreases as the distance increases. Um, the applicant provided lighting plans using dark sky compliant, um, site and building fixtures, and the photometric plan shows zero light spill at the boundary of the property. Um, and the operation is a retail use that is located on a corridor with other similar types of uses. Um, the gas pumps are regulated by the DEC, which require regular inspections. Any issues with odor, um, are only anticipated to be detectable on the site and would be temporary in nature. Um, and, and so, given the analysis, we're recommending a negative declaration for Seeker.
Mr. Chair.
Any questions for the?
Oh, I don't. I would go ahead and make a motion that on this project, PB 2021-08-4, that we do an unlisted action with a negative declaration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Reed?
Yep.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstain? One absent. Just wanna confirm that was one nay, correct? Okay. So that carries six to one and one absent.
I think five to one. Chairman.
Five to one, thank you. Anybody like to make the next motion?
Sure, Mr. Chair, on PB 2021-08-4, that the application is approved as submitted with today's drawing.
I'll second that. All those in favor, just for clarity, I'm gonna do a roll call. So Blocky's an aye. Evelyn?
Aye.
Allenbeck?
Aye.
Huber?
Nay. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to list the reasons that I'm voting no. Do you want me to do that now or after the vote?
I don't think it's required, um.
For the town attorney, I don't know if it's needed.
Yeah, I mean, feel free for, for the record.
Yeah.
Do you want me to do it now or after the call?
I'd like to do it. But can I finish the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, Murray's absent. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Richards, you made the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Sure. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm voting no, nay, because the location and the arrangement of the walkway structure from Ridgewood, in addition to being less convenient for the pedestrian than other proposed layouts, places the pedestrian access into a lengthy conflict point with vehicles, which could have been avoided by and large with alternate building and canopy positioning. I'm also voting nay, because the location and the arrangement of the convenience store and canopy in the front of the building are not in congruence with the recommendations on the town's comprehensive master plan. I'm also voting nay, because the location and the arrangement of the proposed curb cut onto Ridgewood will introduce a number of delivery vehicles and tanker trucks on a routine basis into a residential intersection, which will be over and above the current conditions. I'm also voting nay, because the proposed hours of operation are beyond that of those noise of majority of similar businesses on the same corridor and will contribute to a more lengthy duration of additional noise and ambient light levels, which surpasses not, not only that of nearby businesses, but pre-existing uses, somewhat of which will be unable to be substantially mitigated by the applicant, such as car stereos, noisy mufflers, and glare from the headlight positioning. Furthermore, the location of this building is adjacent to an existing residential structures, which contrasts with other businesses with such extended hours. And finally, I'm voting nay, because the proposed grading for the site leaves the development higher than the residential properties to the west, elevating and making more noticeable any objectional, objectionable influences. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the motion carries five. It's approved, five, one nay, uh, one absent. Best of luck with this project. Thank you. We have another item to go through.
Yes, the last item on the, um, for, item for board action is the referral from the town board. Um, it's upon the matter of request by Jeffrey Harrington for a special use permit to operate a new full-service laundromat on premises seven twenty East Ridge Road in a C-business district. So this is the former Dunn Tire space, and the action before you is just to comment on the use itself. So this is gonna be a laundromat facility that's gonna be open to the public. However, it's a slightly different model in that they'll also have, um, staff that are there actually doing clean laundry, cleaning it, them as well, for, uh, clients who do drop-off and/or pickup services. And this, so this is before the town, this'll go to the town board at their December meeting, um, for the special use associated with that. I will share with you that the applicant is proposing, um, an extension of the existing awning and some modifications to the doorways of the building, and so for that reason, I have them, I've advised them to make application for site plan review for the building modifications. They're not proposing any site changes, but they are proposing changes to the building face. Um, and so we have received that application, and you'll see that at the December, your December agenda, the site plan related to the, um, architectural changes to the building. And I'm sorry if I can add to that too soon and confused. What we're doing right now is just the, the town board referral.
Yeah, so, so, and, and the town board, there's a special use for this?
Laundromat is a listed.
Okay.
A special use.
So, any town board members have any comments?
Its location should allow adequate parking. Um, I don't believe, um, there are too many laundromats in that district. I'm not having any objection to doing, uh, positive referral to the, uh, town board on this issue.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that. There's no, there's no residential directly adjacent. Um, I have no issue with it.
Yeah, I, I see it all as positive, too. Um, anybody have anything negative regarding this?
I'm gonna make one comment, and it's a recommendation for some, the town board to take a look at, and it's in, it's echoing, um, Erin McGee's comment in her, in her email, that they need to look at solids management and how to capture those and hold them in perpetuity. Um, because if any of that stuff gets passed and into the sanitary sewer, it's gonna cause some havoc with the sewer laterals and things. So, uh, this is a big, uh, user, this use is, it's a big user of water. It also creates a lot of use of the sewer system. Um, and Monroe County has some trouble with our wastewater treatment plant capacity anyhow. I don't think this is gonna be a huge deal, but they need to look at, at, at ways, some wastewater concerns. That's, that's my only comment.
So I brought it down as need to look at solids management. How else, what else would you want me to add to that?
Um, just wastewater generation. Need to look at flows.
I don't object to that. Anybody else object to that?
Sounds great to me.
Alright, so I'll make the motion that we make a positive referral with the condition to need to look at solid, uh, solids management and wastewater generation.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, so since it says in the application that the hours will be seven AM to eleven PM, uh, that's what we're approving, right? So, uh, in the future, if they wanted to change those hours, um, uh.
So it's the town board's purview, with that's part of their special use permit?
Yeah.
So, the, I, I will share with you that, and I apologize, if, um, the, the applicant did indicate or clarify, it would not be open, it would be open to the public during those hours. However, because this is an operation that also is gonna have service provided where they're doing the cleaning, they want the flexibility in the future to potentially add the ability for staff only to utilize the site to do cleaning if they needed to add a B-shift or a C-shift to meet demand. They don't know yet if they're gonna need that, so they altered their, and I apologize if, 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 um, the oper, the public operation is gonna be capped at eleven PM. At least that's what the applicant's proposing. I don't know if the town board would, uh, make any conditions related to that.
So for clarity, I think your question was, do we have any comments on hours?
And your, our, our recommendation, our approval, our recommendation to the town board, um, is based on this, uh, eleven, seven to eleven. And, um, if they, uh, you know, if the town board approve it as written, they would get it for seven to eleven for public. And, uh, uh, I guess, I guess my concern is that I'm not so sure that I would be in the same mindset if it were just a, like, uh, if they were allowed to then change their hours, that I'm, my recommendation would change, I, is what I'm saying. Does anyone understand what I'm trying to say?
You're saying if it was a twenty-four-seven operation?
That would be different.
Different.
And so, my con, I just wanted to make sure that, um, the recommendation that we're making is based on seven to eleven, and, uh, it's no more than that.
So what comment would you want me to make?
I just, I, I, I don't think it's a comment, I'm just asking.
Suggestion?
Uh, no, it's just, uh.
So as presented, the applicant has indicated they are gonna be open to the public, seven AM to eleven PM. So if you wanted to clarify, you're issuing a positive, but they did further, they, they further clarified that they would want the ability for staff only to be. that they would want the ability for staff only to be able to operate in the, in the bill, in the building.
So I guess to your point, Mr. Chair, that, that part of our, uh, positive recommendation would be based on the fact that their application is presented as from seven to eleven PM for public.
Yes.
And just for the record, going forward, I think that we should add in there that this is a suitable location for this type of business.
That's a good addition, since that's what the town board is looking for the planning board's guidance on.
You want to put the comment about parking then too, or?
And that there is adequate parking to handle the customer volume.
Okay, so it's a positive referral with need to look at solids management and wastewater generation. Application is seven AM to eleven PM for public access. Suitable location and adequate parking for customer volume.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One absent. And with that, unless there's, I don't think we have any minutes or anything.
We do.
You have four months.
Yes.
You only have three.
Three, okay. Three months.
Boy, I was ready to grab that.
Oh.
Yeah, you were. I saw that.
And Mr. Evelyn, if you have any comments or changes. What I'm going to say is speak clearly into the microphone because Michelle is gonna be utilizing the video to do her minutes and make her changes.
How's about I just give these to you and will you leave them on Michelle's desk?
I certainly can. Do you want to then have her come in December with revised minutes?
Um, no. How about I read them off and then I'll give them to you?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, so, um, pertaining to the June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one minutes, I move that we approve them as submitted.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, the July twenty-sixth minutes, I have one edit that, uh, the first motion on the motion, um, west should be capitalized. Other than that, I move we approve.
Second.
And August twenty-third, um, change, or add an A to aesthetics. Um, remove the T from no, and I'm pretty sure the tanks aren't going to be suppling the gas. I think they're gonna be supplying it. Other than that, I move we approve.
Second.
So can I do all three minutes then for approval with the corrections that Mr. Evelyn called out?
Please.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Six, zero, one absent. With that, can we now, I have a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Close it. Second.
Adjourn the meeting is what we really, it's wanting to do.